Good evening. Seeing that we have a quorum, I will call to order this meeting, this special session of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, October 9th, 2024. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Here.
Councilmember Sidney Zulick?
Here.
Councilmember Dave Rollo?
Here.
Councilmember Ruff?
Here.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Stossberg?
Here.
Councilmember Asari?
Very present.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Here.
And Councilmember Daley?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move on to our land and labor acknowledgement. We recognize that the city of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people. And we acknowledge they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana and Bloomington resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many Indigenous and other people of color. And we commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. Our agenda this evening consists of legislation for second readings as follows. First, we will have appropriation ordinance 2024-05, an ordinance for the appropriations and tax rates establishing the 2025 civil city budget for the city of Bloomington. I understand we have a taxpayer objection petition that we will review. We also have an amendment to the appropriation ordinance. Number two will be appropriation ordinance 2024-06, an ordinance adopting a budget for the operation, maintenance, debt service, and capital improvements for the water and wastewater utility departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana, for the year 2025. Number three, we will have the appropriation ordinance 2024-07, appropriations and tax rates for Bloomington Transportation Corporation for 2025. Then we will review any items of council scheduling and adjourn. So we will go to the first appropriation ordinance.
I'd like to move appropriation ordinance 2024-05 be introduced and read by the Clerk by title and synopsis only.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Clerk Bolden, would you please read?
Appropriation ordinance 2024-05, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates establishing the 2025 civil city budget for the city of Bloomington. There's no synopsis, and I would like to note that your straw poll vote was 8-0-1.
I'm sorry, our what was 8-0-1?
Your straw poll. Your committee recommendation, from your committee of the whole.
I thought we didn't have a straw...
You did.
We did?
Yes.
Okay, so the agenda was mistaken, I'm sorry.
Yes.
8-0-1, thank you.
I would like to move appropriation ordinance 2024-05 be adopted.
All right. So I think, wait a minute. We'll have a presentation from the city comptroller to start with.
Good evening, council. Jessica McClellan, city comptroller. I would like to thank you for all the time that you've spent working on this 2025 budget with us. It's been a pleasure, and we don't have a formal presentation. We are available to answer questions, and I understand there is an amendment coming for the parking meter fund, and we are happy to work through all of that with you.
Thank you. Could you kindly give us the total budget and perhaps the total in the general fund?
Yes. The total DLGF reviewed budget is $115,128,135. And I was just adding this again before I came up. The Home Rule Fund's total is $36,545,054, for a total of $151,673,189.
Okay, and what is the tax levy? Or the, I'm sorry, the tax rate? For income taxes? I'm sorry, for property taxes?
Property tax levy is on the general fund, the Bonds, Parks and Recreation Fund, and the Cume Cap Development Fund, and it is advertised high at 1.0414. The DLGF review of our net assessed value and our property tax adopted levy will give us our final tax rate at the end of the year.
So 1.0414 is, that is the amount paid on $100 of assessed value?
Correct.
Can you remind, okay. Thank you. I think we may want to consider the petition next, and then the amendment, and then we'll come back for any questions on the appropriation ordinance as a whole.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stossberg?
I would like to move to structure the discussion regarding the taxpayer objection petition in the following ways. So I would move to give the petitioner 10 minutes to present their petition, and then the CIB 5 minutes to present a response, followed by an untimed period of council questions, public comment, and then finally council comments and a vote on our statutorily required findings.
There's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to structure debate as outlined. Are there any questions or comments, or is this a motion that doesn't take questions and comments? Okay, so all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so maybe we should do a voice vote then? Just to be clear. Just to be clear. Kirk Bolden, could you please call the roll on the motion to structure debate?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulick?
No.
Rollo?
Yes.
Ruff?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes. That passes by a vote of 7-2. So that is the structure we will use for addressing the taxpayer petition. We will now provide 10 minutes total for the petitioner. There were 10 taxpayers whose names appeared on the petition of objection, and they will be given a total of 10 minutes collectively. So who is here to speak on this matter? Do we have a petitioner here? Okay, please approach the podium. You will have up to 10 minutes. Are there any other petitioners with us today, either on Zoom or in council chambers? Deputy Attorney Kulak, if you could review how people can raise their hand in Zoom?
Yes, if you are on Zoom and you'd like to raise your hand to indicate that you are a named petitioner in the taxpayer objection petition filed with the city, you can do so by raising your hand. If you do not know how to do that, it is in the reactions tab or the more tab. And if you need extra assistance, you can send a chat to myself, the meeting host.
Thank you. Please let us know if any hands are raised. I don't see anybody else in council chambers, so I would ask the one petitioner to please approach the microphone. Mr. Davis, could you please come to the microphone to make your presentation? We did already receive this via email.
No, it's been slightly updated, and it's more clarifying and less janky.
Okay, we need to consider what was actually submitted and not the revised addition. So let us start the timer, Mr. Davis. We need to continue with our business.
Just a sec.
Please do state your name for the record when you come up.
To 10 minutes.
Starting now.
Hello, my name is Joe Davis, J-O-E-D-A-V-I-S, and I represent the taxpayer objection petitioners. Thank you for hearing our concerns. So we are opposed to any funds allocated to be allocated or appropriated for the Capital Improvement Board, the CIB. Specifically, any funds that were raised through the food and beverage tax, or any indirect funds that have been funneled for the expansion of the Monroe County Convention Center through other budgets like economic development, and any other indirect funds that are making their way toward that group and toward this effort that we do not need. We, the taxpayer objection petitioners, find fundamentally that this project, this venture, is a public taking. All of these funds are public monies. The property is public property that is being proposed to build this unnecessary convention center. The food and beverage tax is the people's money. The people paid that at restaurants and other vendors of prepared food, and the restaurants and other vendors of prepared food, they passed along this tax. It wasn't coming from them. They were just, they just gathered it and then passed it along so that it could be placed in the proper accounts for the public's good, the use of the public. There are, there are basic fundamental reasons why this is unnecessary to expand in this way. 2023 community survey done by the city of Bloomington, basically with around, a little less than 1,000 respondents that gave their opinion as to the importance of the expansion of the Monroe County Convention Center. Only 18% thought that it was an appropriate use at that time, a very, very low priority. In other words, 82% of those community members did not think that it was appropriate or a high priority, when we have so many other problems, pressing issues of crisis in our community. We're overwhelmed by the homeless population, the unhoused, and the corresponding unmedicated population that is also present here. The CIB is looking to create a facility which largely will not be utilized by the public. It is, it is proposed that this would become a facility that could be rented out by any member of the nation or world who had a business plan to organize tournaments or other events, non-resident organizers, that would serve not the public, not the people of Bloomington. The purpose is profit. The convention center would rent out this space. We would have all of these individuals coming into our town who have no association to this town, and we would feel all of the abrasive, damaged results of trash, more party bro culture, which we already have enough of. The civic center that we have currently, the existing Monroe County Convention Center, is a civic center. It serves the public. It serves IU. It serves the people. It is inappropriate to, for local government to create a business venture. The local government, both city and county, are supposed to serve the people who elected them. Those are the people who voted those electeds into office. Further, the formation of the CIB is suspect. This appropriation, or this delegation of authority in perpetuity to this appointed board, leaves the general community, the public, the citizens with no oversight, no way to control their own tax dollars that are being wastefully spent on this project. Not only that, but if it's built, we will continue to subsidize it as a community in perpetuity. Never have we come to understand that there was actually a cost-benefit analysis that was conducted on our own existing Monroe County Convention Center. Perhaps, perhaps a little forgiveness can be made if it is truly a civic center like this one, but what is being proposed is a monstrosity. It is uninspiring, and it is taking up one of the most valuable pieces of property that our community has, central, downtown. This public land and any public funds that are utilized in this property should be decided upon by the people. We are the providers of the tax money. As I shared with the Capital Improvement Board earlier today, if the common council passes this budget and approves the appropriations, the re-up of the food and beverage tax agreement, and also directing almost $1 million of the taxpayers' money to the CIB, then our group will file a class action, civil tort, against the executive and the legislative bodies of both city of Bloomington and county government. The CIB will be a name defended as well, and also the redevelopment commission. Because once again, the requests are to give away the public's land, which it overpaid for when the previous executive purchased the Bunker and Robertson property that is north of the existing convention center. It is proposed that the government, that the city of Bloomington, become a partner in ownership of this hotel that's going to come in. This, again, is public land. Why are we giving away public land so central to the heart of our downtown when that space as well could be utilized for more high-minded civic use? The use that the people...
Mr. Davis, you have 37 seconds left.
So, along with the findings, we demand that each council member, Courtney Daley, Kate Rosenbarger, Isak Ntiasari, Hope Stossberg, Isabel Piedmont Smith, Andy Ruff, Dave Rollo, Sidney Zulick, and Matt Flaherty disclose if they are going to profit in one way or another if this project goes through, and these be attached to the findings and placed permanently in perpetuity with the budget and the petition itself. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Deputy Attorney Kulak, did anybody on Zoom raise their hand to indicate they are also a petitioner in this matter? Just for our information, the time has elapsed.
They did not, and the names that I see as guests on Zoom do not match any of the named petitioners in the petition.
Okay, thank you. We will now, since this objection has largely been about the budget for the CIB, we will now allow the CIB 5 minutes to respond. And please give your name, and go ahead.
Yes, my name is Jim Whitlatch, and I'm the attorney for the CIB. I'm a private attorney here in Bloomington with Bunker and Robertson, and I represent the CIB. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for the opportunity to work with you and the CIB. And thank you, Mr. Davis, for your presentation. I'll be as very brief as I can be, 5 minutes, obviously. So my response to this is, first of all, the petition was not timely filed pursuant to the statute that requires that it must be filed no more than seven days after the public hearing. It was filed more than seven days after the public hearing, so it was not timely. I'm also, would point out that the objecting document is supposed to be an objecting petition. There are no signatures on this petition. There's only one petitioner here, and so I even wonder whether or not there are 10 petitioners, and a petition is something that's signed, not unsigned document. I also question whether or not it's specific as required by the statute, and so I think there are many defects in the petition. Having said that, I understand it's a prudent decision of you as a city council to have this hearing or this presentation, and I also think it's prudent on your part to make a finding, as that's required, and there's no point, while we're here and while we're doing this, not to make a finding in case at some point somebody would say that it was timely filed and the other things are not defective. So I understand the decision to make a finding, and we're generally in support of that and think that you should make that finding. In making that finding, I think that it's appropriate that you indicate in that the deficiencies that are in this document, but that nonetheless you are making a finding. In making the finding, I think it's important to point out that the CIB was appropriately legally formed by county ordinance, not by the city or not by the prior mayor. It was formed in July of 2023. The authority to create it is a state statute, Indiana Code 36-10-8. And since it has been formed, the CIB has complied with the requirements of the statute of the ordinance of the interlocal agreement with the city. They've had public meetings. Today was our 30th public meeting since this was created, and so we have complied with what we're required to comply with. The CIB has representatives from the city and county who are appointed, but they're appointed by elected officials. No public lands have been turned over to the CIB. We have made inquiry about what lands are available, but the CIB currently holds no lands. So the part of the petition that alleges that is not accurate. And as far as the taxes from the food and beverage tax, those are required by the state statute to be used for the purpose of the convention center. I have briefly looked at the revised petition, certainly if the one that was filed earlier was not timely. The one that was filed just before this meeting is not timely. There's a number of additional new issues in that, but I would assert that it should not be considered as part of this petition to the extent it is even a petition and to the extent it's timely filed. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you, and I'll be happy to answer questions if we get to that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitlatch. We will now go to questions from council members to either the petitioners or the representatives of the CIB. So are there any questions from council members? Councilmember Stossberg?
I'll go ahead and ask some questions just to clarify factual information, so our attorneys may be able to answer this, potentially the attorney from the CIB. At the end of this petition, there was a whole list of items that the petitioner felt like were more important to spend money on right now, including the unhoused population, unmedicated population, which implies health care, and perhaps mental health issues, affordable housing, and other social equity and justice needs. Can you just clarify whether or not any of the food and beverage tax could potentially be spent on any of those types of expenditures?
All very... Were the expenditures and things to think about, none of which can be, the food and beverage tax money can be used for, because the food and beverage tax by state statute can only be used for the purpose of constructing and increasing the size and the renovation of a convention center. So that's the only thing that money can be spent for, not for those other, obviously worthy causes, but that money cannot be used for that purpose.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from council members? Councilmember Zulick?
I also have a question for Mr. Whitlatch. Can you please confirm that the convention center is not expanding towards the Bunker Robertson property and instead expanding east? And then I have a follow-up question.
It is expanding east. It is not expanding to the Bunker and Robertson property.
Thank you. And the east location is owned by the county and not the city, is that correct?
I think it's primarily owned by the county. I think there may be a lot that is a city lot over there. Two lots that are city lots, but it's primarily owned by the county.
Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. According to the petition, Whitlatch, you mentioned that the food and beverage tax can only be used for constructing or expanding a convention center. I'm pretty sure other allowed uses include related tourism expenditures. And are there examples of the county spending portions of its food and beverage tax allocation on items that are not a convention center?
That is not accurate, because what it's, that is part of the statute, but those have to be related to the convention center. So yes, it does mention other items that it can be supportive tourism, but it has to be related to in supporting the convention center.
Yes, you just didn't mention that initially, so thank you, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Other council member questions? I have a question for Mr. Davis. Can you, do you, is there any verification you can provide about the other nine taxpayers that they are indeed taxpayers? they are indeed taxpayers who reside in the city of Bloomington and that they indeed agree with everything in the motion?
Yes, I have names and addresses of, in this notepad, of the other petitioners, and on my phone, I have names and addresses that were received through text message, and I can submit that as verification. We chose not to add those names on the petition itself for fear that there might be malicious bad actors that would reach out and potentially cause mayhem if these bad actors knew of the specific address of the individuals who signed the petition. But all of the petitioners gave myself power of attorney, and it was all received before the deadline. So I am happy to provide that documentation as a class of individuals who are going to be damaged if this is approved. The Indiana Rules of Trial Procedure state that should it be found that any class representative after certification is found to not have standing, then another individual who does have standing can substitute.
Okay, I think you've answered my question. Thank you. If you have such documentation, then it should have been submitted with the petition. Any other questions? Okay. If there are no other questions from council members, we can go to public comment. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on the objection petition by taxpayers? Deputy Attorney Kulak, can you make the announcement for Zoom, please?
Yes, if you are on Zoom and you are a member of the public and wish to make a comment, you may do so by raising your hand, using the raise hand feature in the reactions tab, or if you cannot find it, the more tab. You can also send a chat to the meeting host.
And this is public comment only on the objection petition by taxpayers? I don't see anybody in council chambers. Are there any hands raised via Zoom? All right. Then we can come back to council members for council comment and debate and discussion of findings regarding this petition. Councilmember Stossberg?
I just want to ask a process question right now. Is our council staff going to keep track of a file, like a findings document for us so that then that can be written?
Making notes on the testimony, yes.
Great, thank you.
At this time, would it please counsel if I offered an opinion on some things that have been presented to date?
Yes. As our council attorney, I would welcome your legal opinion on the matters.
My opinion is that the petition distributed to council members tonight is not timely filed and shouldn't be considered. However, there is still the petition that was emailed to the city that I think is subject to consideration tonight. The CIB attorney also referenced an issue that there are no signatures on the petition. I've considered this issue myself. However, Indiana Code Section 6-1.1-17-5 doesn't specifically require signatures. There is the implication that because the term petition is used, that maybe signatures should be required or are required, but I don't think that that's clear. It could be a subject of your findings, perhaps. And then the final point I wanted to speak to was the question of the 10 or more taxpayers, and really who submitted the objection petition. From what we know, it was emailed by Mr. Davis. It identifies on its face the names of 10 individuals in the heading, and then at its end, it states that it was submitted by, quote, "the taxpayers of the city of Bloomington." It's unclear whether all of those individuals are taxpayers. Council office attempted to verify that, and it's unclear whether all 10 are. And I requested by email of Mr. Davis that information be provided, but it was not, it didn't receive any. So I think that this issue is appropriate to be considered as a finding. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Attorney Lehner. So I open it up to council members for feedback on the petition and potential findings that we will enter into the record. They don't have to be fully formed and stylized, well-crafted thoughts. We can do that as we move along, so I welcome your feedback. Councilmember Asari?
Thank you to the petitioners and to the CIB for being here. I don't think that the objections that are raised in the petition, though I think it was filed in a way that we should be listening to it, I respect the general public's ability to object, to budget, but I don't think that the specific objections, namely that the CIB is a legal body, or that the money raised for FABTAC tax is inappropriately being used for the CIB. I think that when the food and beverage tax was passed, it was explicitly for this purpose, and it was passed under law. And so I would not, I don't think that the objections that are raised in the petition here sort of warrant or support the modification to the budget. I might also note that the petition isn't clear about what modification is to be made to the budget, nor does it specify a specific place in the budget to change just generally expenditures on the convention center. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, and I would agree with that finding. Other, Councilmember Stossberg?
I kind of have a question about Councilmember Asari's finding. I support that finding as well, but does the summary, in terms of actually putting it in a document of a finding, does the summary sentence, the testimony presented, doesn't support modifying the budget? Sum up your thoughts on that?
Yes.
Is that helpful to our council attorneys? Great. I would also, and maybe this is also summed up with that sentence, that sentence was something on my paper, in my opinion, the petition includes several factual inaccuracies, and I don't know if we need to specify those in our findings or not, but, for example, the CIB, how the CIB was created, for example, the mention of the Bunker Robertson property, which is not being given away at all. And like, in fact, at some point, I remember us saying that if the convention center was going to be put in that location, then we wanted the CIB to pay the city for that land how much we had paid for it. So in no way were we going to give away that land at all, and the CIB does not currently own any of that property downtown. In the long term, I believe the city is going to, like, I think the ownership of that is going to revert to city, isn't it? Can somebody?
City of Bloomington.
Yeah, yeah, it's going to stay publicly owned property. And I think that there's, I mean, there's several other, I think, just factual inaccuracies in there. I mentioned that part of what the FABTAC can actually get spent on, like, we do have to consider what we're allowed to spend specific categories of money on, and spending the FABTAC on any of those things that I asked about earlier is just not possible. So I don't know if there's any way to put that into a finding of, we find the petition to be just factually inaccurate in a number of ways, including, and just listing a couple of those would be appropriate.
Council Attorney Lehner?
I think it also would be appropriate to make a finding whether the petition was filed late further, whether it's clear or unclear that 10 taxpayers filed the petition.
Is that, would you say that's a necessary part of the findings, the lateness? It's one minute, so I'm a little hesitant.
I think that's fine. If you want to find that you will accept the petition on that basis, then I think that's acceptable.
I mean, do we have to mention the time thing at all? I mean, we're obviously addressing the petition.
No, I don't think that that's necessary.
I mean, maybe others want to, I don't know.
Sorry, I had my hand up, that was all.
Oh, Councilmember Flaherty, I didn't see you, sorry.
I feel like I maybe had the opposite reaction, which is like, actually just sticking to the facts and the basics of what, of the petition and its defects we perceive, and whether or not it warrants adjustment of this appropriation ordinance is like where I would like to stick to it. I think the more you get into the details of this isn't factually accurate, or the money can't be spent this way, the more uncomfortable I get with voting in favor of the findings. In particular, I was just looking up to recall for sure, Monroe County councils, you know, appropriated and spent money on the Herodsburg Heritage Festival fireworks display, for instance, with food and beverage tax proceeds. That has really no logical nexus to a convention center at all. It is a related tourism or economic development project, which is the exact language of statute that I think is really quite expansive. And so the argument being made might be that there are other things in this budget that that money could go to that would replace money that is more fungible in going to the needs of the petitioner outlined. I'm not, like, all I'm saying is that those things are possible, and if we start to get into the details of litigating the argument, I think that's less effective than saying, here's what we think factually about the validity of this petition meeting the requirements of state code, and we do or do not find that it warrants adjustment of this appropriation ordinance, so.
Councilmember Stossberg?
So, Councilmember Flaherty, do you have specific suggestions on what you think the finding should be?
I think that it was not timely, that it's unclear whether 10 taxpayers were petitioners, and that, I think there's one more, that a summary of the findings, or summary of the testimony itself, I suppose, at a very brief level, and then that we do not believe it warrants adjustment of the appropriation ordinance.
So I would propose that we find the testimony presented does not support modification to the budget. And then, I don't know about, I would also support a finding that we were unable to verify that the requirement of having at least 10 taxpayers file was met, because Council Attorney Lehner did ask for that verification, and it was not received, and it was not submitted with the petition. But, I mean, we could just make it easy and say the testimony presented does not support modification to the budget, if that's simpler.
That's what I would say, just.
That's simpler.
Yeah.
Any other feedback to what's been said or suggestions? Councilmember Ruff?
Well, I'd just like to get clarification on this timeliness issue. Councilmember Flaherty, I thought I heard say that he feels that it was not submitted in a timely manner. Is that right, from our understanding? But there was some discussion from our council attorney earlier about email versus the actual petition. I just really want clarification, and I think it's important to make it, I think it's important to make it a finding, because if it is even a minute late, so we're saying a precedent, so is two minutes okay next time, if this happens next year, five minutes, 10? You know, there's got to be a cutoff, in my view. So is 12:01 the official time that it was submitted? Or is that what we're considering, the time?
Yes, 12:01 a.m. is the time.
Reflected on the email received by Corporation Counsel Margie Rice.
Councilmember Stossberg?
For public record, can you say 12:01 a.m. on what date?
October 3rd.
And it needed to be submitted by when in order for it to be timely?
Technically, it should be required, well, the statute requires that it be filed within seven days of the public hearing, which was September 25th. The seven days expired then on October 2nd, and this was received on October 3rd.
So it needed to be filed October 2nd by 11:59 p.m., and it was October 3rd at 12:01 a.m.
Correct.
Council Attorney, Deputy Attorney Kulak or Council Attorney Lehner, do you have something written that you could share? What I'm hearing is that we would like to have a finding that the testimony presented does not support modification to the budget, and at least a few council members would like to note that the petition was not filed within the deadline.
I can share what I have been working on. Hold on one moment.
Thank you. Was, colleagues, is there any other finding that we should add? Councilmember Stossberg?
I just have a question for our attorneys, like, how many findings are usual or expected? Like, I mean, that's like two findings. Is two findings enough?
I think that that's appropriate. There is no correct or incorrect way to do this. Of course, those are two very important findings, the timeliness and the insufficiency of evidence presented.
So it seems to me we should... Sorry, Councilmember Daly?
I'm just going to say, talking about other findings, Councilmember Stossberg did mention that the petition was full of inaccuracies. I don't know if that's something that we wanted to, including, or if we needed to then be specific about the inaccuracies, but I'm just backing up Councilmember Stossberg with that statement.
Right, and then Councilmember Flaherty suggested it would be better not to delve into that part, so I don't know what the majority would like. Councilmember Stossberg?
I just am not sure how specific we need to be. So, you know, in thinking about that very vague sentence, "the testimony presented doesn't support modifying the budget," well, why doesn't it support modifying the budget? So I would say, well, there's actual factual inaccuracies. I mean, I think that then there's also like judgment calls about whether we actually think the new convention center is going to be a glorified YMCA, or whether there's going to be other types of issues as were cited in the petition. But those things are opinion-based, and so I was kind of looking at the factual things. But, I mean, if our attorneys don't think that we need to have specifics to kind of back up that concept... attorneys don't think that we need to have specifics to kind of back up that concept of "The testimony presented doesn't support modifying the budget," then I'm totally fine leaving it as that statement. I just wanna make sure that it's kind of in compliance, and that also it's well-understood why we're making the decision that we're making.
You know, I think that you could, certainly, the factual accuracy of the petition is relevant to the sufficiency of the evidence. So I think it makes the findings stronger to include that.
Perhaps we could say, we could find that there are factual inaccuracies in the petition without mentioning the specifics of what they are. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Thank you. I don't necessarily lean that direction, or else, I mean, because I would also say there are factual accuracies in this petition, that, you know, the community survey found that only 18% of the city population thought that this was important. So I think it's hard to, I guess, highlight inaccuracies. I mean, I feel like what we're saying is this was not filed timely, in a timely fashion, and I don't know why we need to get into the inaccuracies, I guess. Because, to me, if it was filed in a timely fashion, then I think we would get into potentially inaccuracies or accuracies.
My recommendation would be to identify the different bases on which you're making the findings, and if there's more than one, more than the timeliness, I would include that as well, even if you do find that it wasn't timely filed.
Do councilmembers want to specify any inaccuracies? I, Councilmember Rosenbarger suggested we don't cite any, but others might disagree. Councilmember Asari?
I think, I think, just maybe nod of heads or something. It feels like the majority of us agree with Councilmember Rosenbarger, Councilmember Flaherty. You said no. I mean, we have a.
I'm indifferent, honestly.
Indifference.
I just wanna, I just want to make sure we do it right.
Yeah, I mean, the first statement, I think, that we arrived at summarizes all of these points very well. So if we just have those two statements, which is, we don't think, I forget how we said it, but that the objection to the petition and testimony that don't, what was the wording? That we don't support the modification, and it was delivered late, I think is enough.
I agree.
And then we can continue on and do the other business that we're here to do.
I would just, I would like to say, in regards to Councilmember Rosenbarger's comment, that just because there are accurate things does not mean we shouldn't call out inaccurate things. And it bothers me very much that that has been suggested, that whenever anybody says something, so if they say something that's accurate followed by a lie, we should not call out the lie. That's ridiculous. That doesn't make any sense to me. But if a majority would prefer to not delve into that at all, then that's what the majority says. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
What I mean is, to me, if we were going to consider this petition as filed timely, then we would be looking at the facts of the petition. And for me, the inaccuracies would not diminish the, most likely, the accuracies, right? Like, if there were things that were factually accurate, that, to me, made it so that our budget should be, the budget should be changed, like, then it wouldn't matter that they said something wrong, the petitioner said something incorrect about who owns the land, or what it's getting used for. That's what I meant. Like, a little more like the opposite, that like, it wouldn't, to me, invalidate the cause for consideration, I guess.
Thank you for that clarification. I think we just live in a society in the United States today when people, certain people on the national stage lie whenever they open their mouth, so I'm particularly sensitive to that. But I understand better what you mean now. So, we have on our screen quite a lot of details, and I don't know that we really want that amount of details. Do we need to say, give a summary of what was stated at the meeting? That seems, I don't know why we have to do that. Counsel Attorney Lehner, can you explain, please?
Isn't in the findings themselves. That's simply a record, a summary of some of the information presented during this portion of the public meeting.
Okay, so could we see the text of the findings as they stand currently? So I believe what we seem to have agreed upon is that the petition was not filed in a timely manner, and that the, what was the phrase? The testimony presented does not support modification to the budget. Clerk Bolden, did you have something to add?
Actually, I had a question.
Yes, please.
But it was for your attorney.
Yes, go ahead, Clerk Bolden.
Just to follow up rather quickly, you said you were doing a summary of the statements that were made during the public, the petitioner's statement. Did you intend those to be included in the minutes? So you do not want the clerk to prepare that portion of the meeting, or how exactly are you preparing that for? Sorry, I probably should have asked you beforehand, but here we are.
My apologies. I included a summary of what was stated in the testimony based off of what is in Indiana Code 6-1.1-17-5(c), which says, "If a petition is filed under subsection B," which is the one right before it detailing how a petition can be filed, "the fiscal body of the political subdivision shall adopt with its budget a finding concerning the objections in the petition and any testimony presented at the adoption hearing." So that's why I did that. I can separate them, I can leave you, excuse me, leave you to it. This is just a novel thing, so I just went with typing out as much detail as possible to capture it all.
As you know, Attorney Kulak, I'm always happy to let you do whatever you can. So I appreciate it. I just wanted clarification, so thank you very much.
If you can give me one moment to separate these, I will do so.
Yes. So council staff is just working on separating out the findings from the summary of the petitioner's statement and the conversation that we've had thus far.
To clarify things, would somebody be able to identify which findings you would like to be made as a part of this? You're considering, it sounds like you're considering two findings. One, that the petition was not timely filed.
Yes.
Two, that the petition contains factual inaccuracies?
No, no, the second finding would be that the petition and the testimony presented does not support modification of the budget.
Okay.
What I've heard so far is basically listing, this is when it was received, this is the issue of timeliness, this is the issue of a required number of taxpayers, and then this is the statement at the end. Let me know if I need to cut any.
Sorry?
Three off, because I'm not, I think it's three, yeah. Just because, I mean, we, as a city, should be able internally to verify whether or not people pay taxes, so it kind of feels like us saying, us saying, hey, we asked them and they didn't tell us, is, but I might be wrong about that. It just doesn't seem necessary to the argument here.
Former number three is accurate, but maybe not necessary. Any, yes, Councilmember Stossberg?
Just regarding the former number three, you know, anybody could file this paperwork and put down the names of any 10 people who live in Bloomington. It's not hard to find 10 people, including names and addresses. And I know that state code doesn't, like, require signatures on it, apparently, based on how it's framed, but literally, you could just make it up. And I'm not saying that Mr. Davis has done this, and I see you over there waving around your phone and your notebook, but that is the kind of information that needs to be filed with the actual petition. So I think that it is fair to put that up there and just be like, we don't really know, because there's one person here representing this party. There aren't multiple people represented. Joe, Mr. Davis, you're one person.
Here is the evidence. It is being submitted right here. Right here, it is being submitted right now.
The petition was due October 2nd.
I would just say that we would include, if we wanted to include reference to this, we could either say that, you know, evidence about this was not submitted on time, or like, add it to number, add it to number two. The petition was not filed according to the seven-day deadline, and nor did we receive point three on time.
What do others think? Do we need to mention the lack of certainty about the number of signatories? Councilmember Zulik?
One, two, and four are more than enough reason to not find the petition timely filed.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
The only, for me, the only finding that is necessary is that it was not filed on time, and which is, I think, unfortunate. And also, just that then we, it's not something to be considered, anyway. But, I mean, you all want the new number four, but I think, I think really the only point is it wasn't filed on time.
Well, I think unless there's a strong argument against it, I would take out number three again. I would like to leave in the last one, because that is, that's the conclusion we have reached. Okay, so if there's no more discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve these findings. I need a motion.
You're gonna do it. I move that the council adopt the findings on the taxpayer objection petition and testimony presented at tonight's adoption meeting.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any final comments? Clerk Bolden, will you please call the roll on the motion?
Yes, Councilmember Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Pete Mountsmith?
Yes.
Stossberg? Yes. Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley? And Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, those findings are adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Next, I believe we have an amendment to appropriation ordinance 2024-05.
Second.
One, two, 2024-05.
Okay.
All right, Councilmember Flaherty, could you please present your amendment?
Yes, thank you. This amendment would reduce by $250,000 in category three services and charges in the Community and Family Resources Department budget, the line item associated with the Parking Meter Fund. It would also require changes in multiple other budget forms that reflect the total amount appropriated from the Parking Meter Fund. I think the synopsis lays it out pretty clearly, but the intent is just to ensure that the, that our expenditures from the Parking Meter Fund are in line with state code and city code. So in particular, Bloomington Municipal Code 15.40.015 has a fairly narrowly prescribed set of possible uses for the Parking Meter Fund. I don't believe the downtown outreach grants fall within the allowed uses. I believe the controller agrees with me, that I welcome her to share that as well. A couple of additional points. One is that this is not meant in any way to be a judgment of whether the downtown outreach grants program is worthwhile of funding. It could be funded from other sources. I just don't think the Parking Meter Fund is an appropriate revenue source and fund. And then, second, is that acknowledging this has been practiced for at least several years, maybe it's something I've asked about before, but I don't think I've drilled down with this level of detail on this particular line item in the budget to make this change previously, but this administration was basically just adopting past practice for this particular line, as far as I understand it. So, happy to answer questions, and hear input from the controller as well.
All right, let's hear from Controller McClellan about this amendment, and then we can go to questions for either the petition, or the sponsor of the amendment, or the staff.
Good evening, council. Controller McClellan, we don't have any questions about this amendment. We understand on the basis behind the amendment, and we have no argument with it. I did do some research in trying to find the basis behind why it was in the Parking Meter Fund, and I wasn't able to find that. But I did go back through as much as I could to 2018, was the first year that I found that this was, that this was something in the Parking Meter Fund. The Parking Meter Fund, parking used to be in the police department. This, these downtown outreach grants used to be in the parking department, and then they've been moved to CFRD, so they've moved around, and, but they have never moved out of the Parking Meter Fund. So we will look for an appropriate place to put this program, and come back to you in 2025 with our suggestions.
Are there any questions from council members, either for the amendment sponsor or for Controller McClellan? Councilmember Ruff?
Would administration make an, say that there's, is this a gray area even at all, or is it just pretty clear that it shouldn't be funding this program?
There's a gray area that isn't, it's part of the Indiana Code for this fund that is not in our Bloomington Municipal Code about maintaining parks, but this grant gives funding to social service agencies. It does not maintain any part directly, maintain Seminary Square Park. So I would say that there isn't really very much gray area here.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stossberg?
So for clarification, I guess I have two questions. So, taking this money out of the downtown outreach grants means that there's $250,000 that then can be spent somewhere else, but then it also means that there's this unfunded piece of our budget. So, my understanding from what you just said is that you're gonna figure out in 2025 how to fund that, but what are we gonna do with the other $250,000 of the Parking Meter Fund?
Well, you're removing $250,000 from the Parking Meter Fund budget. That is a fund that has, like, a medium-sized cash balance in the fund, and that cash, so the $250 will just be added back to that fund balance to be used in the future for replacing parking meters, infrastructure that is allowed in the Parking Meter Fund, which includes streets and roads and sidewalks and bike lanes. So there's a lot of actual infrastructure use that could, as we know, infrastructure is very expensive, that that $250 could go to fund in the future.
Okay, so, but for like fiscal year 2025, it's just kind of sitting there?
Right, for fiscal year 2025, it's, $250,000 is not going to be in the CFRD budget for the downtown outreach grants in the Parking Meter Fund. And then, in 2025, we're gonna come back to you and suggest what fund to put that $250 program, $1,000 program in, so that that program will not go away, it'll just be funded in a different fund.
Right, but that actual money?
Right. Right.
Is just gonna like sit in the parking meter fund next year and is not allocated to anything else either?
Correct, it is not going to be, yeah, we are not suggesting, we're not coming to you and saying, please appropriate an additional 250 to something else. We're, we're just not, we're just not going there.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We will go to public comment. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on amendment one to the appropriation ordinance 2024-05?
Steve Waller speaking here in my capacity as Chair of the Parking Commission. There's always been a question about what should be done with parking meter funds since the fund was set up in 2013. It's always been a gray area. The whole reason why the commission exists is because before that time, after the Cruzan administration created the, the meter fund and put meters in, no fewer than seven different departments of the city touched on some aspect of parking policy. And nowhere was a uniform, at no time was a uniform policy laid out for what should be done with that money by the city regardless, I mean, within the limits of state statute. The commission has adopted a comprehensive policy that I'd be happy to share with members. Councilmember Flaherty, of course, is a member of the commission and can also do that. But I just wanted to address that gray area that we, I don't think collectively have thought deeply enough about what should be an appropriate use of parking meter funds. I'm glad that there's no dispute about the importance of this, of this amendment. I think Ms. McClellan is exactly right. You can simply appropriate it later. The budget is a, one giant app ord that's, you know, you wouldn't want to have to appropriate money for everything every time, all year round. That's the whole point of the process. But, so there's no real loss in approving this amendment. But I would urge the council to consider a more thorough policy for how parking money should be used. My personal opinion is that any revenues over and above expenses should be going to something related such as transportation, public transportation. And in fact, it's not an accident that the Cruzan administration also merged, created a new department called Planning and Transportation, that planning was seen at the time, and I still think it's appropriate, as the most important place to set that kind of policy. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody, anybody on Zoom who would like to comment on amendment one to appropriation ordinance 2024-05? You can use the raise hand function. Deputy Attorney Kulak, is there anybody?
Hands raised, no.
Thank you. Anybody else in council chambers care to comment on the amendment? All right, seeing none, we'll come back to council members. Any final comments on the amendment from council members? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. Just a couple things to follow up. One is, if my colleagues haven't read 15.40.015, I would just encourage you to, to take a look at the short list of nine allowed expenditures. All but two of those nine items do explicitly say parking meters or parking facilities in them. So that's like, seven out of the nine literally have to be spent on some sort of parking item. The other two are related to school crossing, protective facilities, or repairing and maintaining our streets, curbs, sidewalks. It says where the parking meters are in use and all public ways connected with them. You know, transportation network being a network, I would say that's all streets and, and right of way. But, but in any case, it is fairly narrow. Like I said, I think the other item I wanted to bring up is just that for some years I've been talking how we need to take a, a better look as a council for our own benefit and also for the public's benefit of the path from revenue source to populating a fund, including interfund transfers and then expenditures. We tend to start at the fund basis and treat revenue as just this big aggregate. We really need to be drawing those lines, including with respect to both funds and revenue sources, what the state or local limitations are on their use. I think that will serve us all to, you know, identify things like this where we can, can do better. But yeah, I, I've been encouraged by the receptivity of the controller and this administration to taking some of those steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the, oh, Councilmember Stossberg, sorry.
I just wanted to thank Councilmember Flaherty for looking at the details of things like this, and that I really appreciate that. Thanks.
Agreed. All right, Clerk Bolden, will you please call the role on amendment one to appropriation ordinance 2024-05?
Is Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Thank you.
That amendment is adopted by a vote of nine to zero. We will now go back to appropriation ordinance 2024-05 as amended. Are there any questions for the administration about the civil city budget ordinance for 2025? I will note that we've had extensive conversations about this in public over the past month, so it is not a surprise that we do not have questions at this period. So seeing none, we'll go to the public. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on appropriation ordinance 2024-05 as amended, the civil city budget for the city of Bloomington for 2025? If you are on Zoom, you can use the raise hand function, which is under the reactions button on the lower side of your screen, if you'd like to raise your hand to make a comment. I don't see anybody in chambers getting up to comment. Deputy Attorney Kulak, do you see any hands on Zoom? Okay. All right, well then we'll come back to council members for final comments on the civil city budget proposal ordinance app ord 2024-05. Are there any comments from council members? None? Well, I will comment, and I'm sorry that Controller McClellan is not here anymore because I did want to thank her for all the hard work on this budget, and I want to thank Deputy Mayor Gretchen Knapp and Mayor Kerry Thompson. In listening to council when we made our priorities known in the summer, and in particular during and after the budget hearings in August, I think there was good, much better listening on both sides than in the past, and I am pleased with the budget that we have in front of us, and I'll be pleased to support it. I also want to recognize that as the council voted unanimously in May, we are moving slowly towards an outcome based budgeting approach where we don't start with looking at what was the budget last year and how should it be tweaked, but instead we look at what are the outcomes that we want for our community, what are our priorities as a community, and what we want to see improved, and then work backwards from that to say, okay, what are the resources we need to attain these outcomes? So I think that is a good movement, and I look forward to moving further towards that principle of budgeting in the next year. So are there any other comments? If not, we can take a roll call vote. Clerk Bolden, will you please call the role on appropriation ordinance 2024-05 as amended?
Councilmember Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that appropriation ordinance is adopted by a vote of nine to zero. We will move on to the next item on the agenda.
I would like to move appropriation ordinance 2024-06 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
It's been moved that appropriation ordinance 2024-06 be read by the clerk by title and synopsis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation ordinance 2024-06, an ordinance adopting a budget for the operation, maintenance, debt service, and capital improvements for the water and wastewater utility departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year 2025. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance, approved by the Utility Service Board in July of 2024, sets the water and wastewater budgets for 2025. Your committee due pass recommendation was nine zero.
I move appropriation ordinance 2024-06 be adopted.
Second.
All right, and who do we have to present the utilities budget proposal? Is there anybody on Zoom? Director Catherine Zager would normally present.
Hi, Gretchen Knapp, Deputy Mayor. Cat couldn't, Director Zager couldn't be here tonight, so I will present the utilities budget. You've seen it. I think you have, if you have questions, I will do my level best to answer them, but lower your expectations.
All right, I'm sorry that Director Zager couldn't be here. Let me just go to that. So it looks like, just to summarize the ordinance, we have a total water utility budget proposed of $22,656,000, and then we have a total wastewater utility budget of $33,820,000. Thank you, thank you. All right, are there any questions about the water and wastewater utilities budgets? Okay, seeing none. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on the budget proposal for wastewater and water utilities? Yes, you can go ahead and approach the podium and sign in and write, state your name. You'll have up to three minutes. This is on the appropriation ordinance 2024-06, City of Bloomington Utilities, Water and Wastewater. I think we have somebody who would like to comment. Is that, is that right? Okay, please come to the podium and make your comment.
Sorry, I'm just, I'm just getting my notes here.
Time. Please state your name, and you'll have up to three minutes, starting now.
Okay, yes. Mark Hagerty, 612 Summit, Bloomington, Indiana, 47404.
This is a period of time for public comment on the utilities service budget.
Oh, I am, I am. First, I want to identify the people who I represent.
But that's not relevant to this item on our agenda.
Yes, it is. I, I also represent these individuals as well. Joe Davis, 530 South Washington Street, Bloomington, Indiana.
Sir, this is not relevant to-
Christopher Rio Seeloff, 100 East Miller Drive, apartment 50, Bloomington, Indiana, 47401.
If you have a statement about the utilities and how this is relevant, you'll need to state how it's relevant now.
1208-
You'll need to state the relevancy of your statement now.
Darrell Rubel, 1208 and a half, West Kirkwood, Bloomington, Indiana, 47404.
Mr. Davis, this is not relevant. It is out of order.
Josh Simmons, 187600 Avenue, Bloomington, Indiana, 47401. David and Michelle Martin Coleman, 116 East First Street, Bloomington, Indiana, 47401.
Mr. Davis, you are out of order. Please step away from the podium.
Bloomington, Indiana, 47401. Mark Harper, 422 East Penn Court, Bloomington, Indiana, 47408.
I've asked the sergeant at arms to escort you away from the podium, sir.
Sienna M. Harper, 3106 East Stratum Way, Bloomington, Indiana, 47401. Ashton Harper, 124 South Glenwood Avenue, West Bloomington, Indiana, 47401, 401.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other public comment, is there anybody on Zoom who wants to comment on the utilities budget?
There is not. My apologies for trying to get the audio on my phone.
Okay, that happens. All right, well, coming back to council, is there any final council comments on the utilities budget? Okay, I will just remind the public that we did talk about this during the budget hearings in August, and again, a couple of weeks ago, when Director Zager was present and was able to answer questions that we had, and that's why you're not hearing any questions or comment this evening from council members. And I believe we can go ahead and call the role, Clerk Bolden, on appropriation ordinance 2024-06.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that appropriation ordinance is adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Am we ready for the third ordinance of the evening?
I would like to move appropriation ordinance 2024-07 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Clerk Bolden, would you please read?
Yes, appropriation ordinance 2024-07, appropriations and tax rates for Bloomington Transportation Corporation for 2025. There's no synopsis with this appropriation ordinance, but I would like to note your due pass recommendation was nine zero zero.
Thank you for that.
I move appropriation ordinance 2024-07 be adopted.
Second.
All right, and we have Mr. John Connell, Director of Bloomington Transportation Corporation.
Good evening, John Connell, General Manager of Bloomington Transit. Respectfully requesting adoption of this appropriation ordinance. This 2025 Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation budget is $32,632,634 with a proposed tax levy of .0403.
All right, does that do it for your presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Once again, we have discussed this during the budget hearings and two weeks ago as well. Are there any council questions for General Manager Connell? Seeing none, we will go to the public. Is there any member of the public who wants to comment? Oh, I'm sorry, you had a question. I thought you were, I don't know what that meant. You were diving for the ball or something.
Well, it was a this, and then it was a this. Thank you, Mr. Connell, for being here. And I'm just wondering, because we recently got comments from the public through our council email regarding schedules and some staff shortage stuff changing, resulting in some schedule changes sometimes at the last minute. And could you maybe talk a little bit about especially the three bus, which I know, I think is, has been- been, like, there's been some shifts and some proposed shifts in terms of frequency of service, so could you just go over that for just a minute?
Fortunately, the driver shortage continues to be an issue with us, and as long as everybody's healthy, you know, we can make the full schedule. Unfortunately, we've had some situations where we've had five operators out due to medical reasons. So we do have a priority system in place when we are forced. It's always a last resort. We have forced overtime. We have supervisors who are required to drive when needed, but as a last resort, when there are no other options, we have a priority system. In the three route, since it operates typically at 30-minute intervals, we will reduce service to 60 minutes. There's still service available. So we have, based on analysis of ridership per hour and then the frequency of service, we try to have the least amount of inconvenience and impact on the riding public.
Follow up to that, do you have any, like, are there any other ways to communicate those changes to the public besides the, like, cell phone centered, like, in-app or Facebook or other methods of communication so that riders?
We do have, we do have information operators, good old-fashioned telephone, you know, calling in. Of course, that, you know, you're still needing a telephone. Our Spot app is available on computer as well, not just a smartphone, and that's real-time information. But, you know, we use a multitude of social media channels. We have the Spot app, on-bus announcements, so we're doing the best we can to get the word out. It is challenging for individuals who don't have smartphone technology. We recognize that, and we're looking into, you know, other options that hopefully we can get that information to people when they need it.
Great, thank you. And do you want to take this minute to speak to the public about what it would take to become a bus driver, if anybody's out there going, oh, there's maybe a potential job for me?
Yeah, absolutely. I always do. Every time we have an Amazon package delivered or UPS package delivered, I make the pitch. So you do, it does require a Class B commercial driver's license. The good news is, we provide the training, and you're paid during the training period. As far as the wages, the training wage starts off at $19 an hour, and you move to a little over $20 an hour after you come out of training. Given the shortage, there's ample opportunity for overtime. So if you're willing to work overtime, you could most likely make approximately $60,000 a year. So we do have vacancies, and we're looking for people.
So would somebody need to have a clean driving record in order to?
Yes, there are qualifications.
So basically, if you have a driver's license and a clean driving record, then they should apply because you would have training?
Yeah, we do a background check, and there is pre-employment drug and alcohol testing.
Wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome.
As a follow-up, Mr. Connell, seeing that not everybody has a smartphone, do the, I know you have some, a program where Uber and Lyft are available on some routes that where you don't have, especially where you don't have nighttime service.
Right.
Are those, and I'm sorry, this is an obvious question, but can a person call Uber or Lyft on a website instead of a smartphone?
They can call our dispatch office, and the dispatcher will facilitate the TNC, you know, the Uber Lyft transportation. So typically what we do, if we have a service interruption, we can issue a voucher that's available to anyone that wants to download it. Sometimes they're limited in duration, you know, if we're going to suspend service for four hours, there may be a voucher that goes out that's valid for four hours to provide that safety net to individuals so they can still get to where they need to go. So the Spot app, unfortunately, technology, you know, we rely so heavily on technology, and it is difficult for us to have the same safety features in place for individuals who don't have smartphone technology. But you can call the dispatch office, and we can schedule those type of services as well.
And how?
For the passenger.
Okay, and how late is somebody answering the phone at dispatch?
Yes, yeah, just the information line.
No, but how late are those phones answering?
The dispatch, they're answering up until 11 o'clock in the evening.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. Any other questions about Bloomington Transit or Transportation Company's budget? All right, is there any member of the public who would like to speak to Appropriation Ordinance 2024-07, Bloomington Transportation Corporation budget? If there's anybody on Zoom, you can use the raise hand function, which is found in the reactions button on the lower part of your screen. Council Attorney Kulak, do you see any hands raised?
No.
All right. Well, I see nobody here in chambers, so we can go back to council members. Are there any final comments on this appropriation ordinance? Councilmember Zulik?
I'm, I'll just put it out there, I'm looking forward to supporting this budget, but I also just want to thank Director Connell for all of his work and especially how fast and thorough his response was to our constituent earlier today. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Clerk Bolden, will you please call the roll on Appropriation Ordinance 2024-07?
Councilmember Stasberg?
Yes. Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
That appropriation ordinance passes with a vote of nine to zero. We will now move on to any matters of the council's schedule, and we will have, as a reminder, we have a special session scheduled on October 30th, and for that, we will have first reading of salary ordinances next week. Then we also, of course, next week, we will have on October 16th a regular session of the common council, and on October 23rd, we do not have a meeting of the common council, and then on the 30th, we have the special session about the salary ordinances. Note that next week is another meeting at which in-person attendance will be mandatory pursuant to the open door law because we have an appropriation ordinance for the new clerk position to discuss and vote on. Also note that we still have on our calendar a deliberative session, otherwise known as consensus building activity, meeting on November 13th. Councilmember Asari?
I should have sent an email about this, but councilmembers Zulik, Daley, Ruff, and I would like to ask that we have a special session, a very brief one, just so that our council attorneys can brief us on the current action and court action against the council regarding open door law, so that we can also, so I think an executive session would be in order, and I think state municipal code allows three council members to call such a meeting, so I don't know if there's an appropriate time to do so, but would like to suggest, unless everybody would like to change their mind, that we do so on that.
So what date and time are you proposing to call this executive session?
Ideally, like, 15 minutes before a normal council session would be, would sort of be what I had in mind.
All right. If you could name a date and time, then we could put a motion on the table.
6:00 on the 30th. Does that work? Are there any objections to 6:00 on the 30th?
So there's a motion?
If it's three council members, would that be a motion and a vote, or, I know if I call a special session, I believe there's no vote, so maybe there's no vote in this case either. Is that accurate, Council Attorney Lehner, or?
Yes, I believe if you as president call the executive session, you can call it on your own.
Okay, well, it's been called by three members, so, I mean, I can repeat their call.
Yeah, exactly.
So I guess there's no vote required, since three members have proposed an executive session be held at 6:00 PM on October 30th. We will go ahead and schedule that, but I do want to check with Clerk Bolden whether she or someone from her office is available. Yes? Okay, thank you. And is our staff available then as well?
Repeat the date and time again, please.
October 30th at 6:00 prior to the special session at 6:30. Okay, we'll have an executive session at that time to discuss pending litigation. All right. Anything else regarding the council's schedule?
Yes.
Yes, Council, City Clerk Bolden, sorry.
Just you at this point. As a reminder to all the old council members and the new council members, you have to sign the appropriation ordinances for the budget. So if you cannot wait for me to print those off this evening, please make plans to come and sign them tomorrow morning. I don't care whether you do it tonight or tomorrow morning, but we do need to get those signed by all council members, so it's not just the council president this evening.
And I believe Controller McClellan would prefer that we take a few minutes after tonight's meeting so that she has it all this evening, so unless you have an urgent matter, please do stay after to sign those documents. And I believe that leads us to adjournment, so thank you very much, we are adjourned.